Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, January sixth City Council meeting. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Alderman Santi.
Here.
Alderman Glad.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Mahavich.
Here.
Alderman Devine.
Here.
If you could, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're going to be swearing in the office, Alderman Ward, for Ryan Harding. Dave McConnell will go ahead and swear you in. Ryan, step up.
Usually front and center, may I have the city attorney's license received?
More importantly, I'm a nobody.
Five bucks on the dollar.
Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Ryan Harding.
I, Ryan Harding.
Having been duly appointed.
Been duly appointed.
To the office of Alderman Ward four.
The office of Alderman Ward four.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the State of Illinois.
The ordinances of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Alderman.
The duties of Alderman.
Ward four.
Ward four.
To the best of my abilities.
Best of my ability.
Good job.
Go turn them back now.
Routine.
All right. Is there anyone for public comment at this time? Sir, is your name Tony? How do you pronounce your last name?
Muser.
Can you please step up to the podium? And that's U-M-U-S-U-R?
Correct.
Okay. Address, if you could just state your address for public.
Nine O eight Hanson, McHenry or Patriot Estates. I live in Patriot Estates, we all downsized, it's over fifty-five and older, but I would say ninety percent is over seventy. We are probably ninety-five percent full capacity now, there's only like twelve lots left. Our biggest concern now is safety. We've had several incidents, that first snowfall, somebody had footsteps coming through her back door. She's alone, we have a lot of single female ladies there. Another incident where gentleman came home and put the car in the garage and got out and suddenly walked up to him and said, can I talk to you? And he says, no, and gentleman's Fred, you want to finish that?
Sure.
Just his house, what he asked the gentleman.
Fred, if you could just state your full name and address for public.
Sure. Fred Raddick, ten twenty-eight Monroe, McHenry, Illinois, Patriot Estates. On the evening of December twenty-fifth, between five, I'd say five-ten and five-twenty, I was putting the car in the garage, I didn't have my outside lights on because I didn't think I was going to be home that late, and I heard voices, somebody was saying, can I talk to you, can I talk to you? I didn't see anybody, so I stepped out onto my driveway, somebody had approached me and wanted to talk to me. So I said, you're on my driveway, you have to leave, and then he mumbled something, I don't understand, didn't understand them. I told him again, you have to leave, you're on my driveway, and then he mumbled some more stuff, and I said, you gotta leave. So he left, he went to the intersection of Jefferson and Monroe, which is like kitty corner from me, stood out in the intersection and was checking out the whole corner area there. So then I thought it was suspicious, so I called nine-one-one, and they said he was soliciting, that he had a permit to solicit in that community, and he was from a, oh, I forgot what you call it, anyway. But he wasn't going door to door, he was just walking down the street on sidewalk, stopping in front of every house and gawking at the houses. Then he walked far enough north where I lost him in the shadows, you know? And it was, say, between five-ten and five-twenty. And I was on the line with nine-one-one, and I don't know if the call dropped off or what, and, you know, she already had given me an answer that he had a permit for soliciting, so it was like, you know. All right, so that's one thing, we have a gentleman walking his dog around seven-thirty at night, and a guy came up to him and says, can I borrow your phone, I'd like to call my dad, pick me up. We have roughly a hundred twenty-five homes there, we have eight streetlights, eight, one in each corner. Now whoever okayed the zoning for that, for the developer ought to be shot. I was president of the zoning board for two years, safety was first, traffic was second, codes were third, we followed that. I was on a police commission for Lakemore for five years, we demanded that every officer go down every road once a shift, get to know the people, get to talk to them. Now this is what we're talking about as far as safety. We have no safety there, we're seventy and over, I've been there for two and a half years, I haven't seen a car, I seen a car three times in two and a half years, come down my street, and that's it. Now we gotta do something about this. We're not young people anymore, we're older, we act slower, but we need your help is what we need. So Chief, if you can get some police traction out there.
I'd be more than happy to talk to you after the council meeting.
Okay. I live at nine O eight Hanson, you want to come out? Like I said, as Police Chief for five years for Lakemore, and we did a lot more than I think that McHenry's doing right now for our citizens, to be honest with you, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? See none, moving on to consent agenda, item six A through six G. Is any council members willing to pull an item for separate consideration, all of them?
A, B, and E for discussions, please.
A, B, and E is an error?
Yes.
Okay, any others? All right, I am looking for a motion for items six C, D, F, and G for approval. Alderman Santi?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Alderman Harding? Mo, any discussion on these items?
Just move quickly, six C with the dry G.
Is that now completed, already with the extra work that has to be done?
Yes, they just completed it this weekend, wrapped up.
So, okay.
So you'll see, you'll see, I think the long reach excavator is the only thing that's left, they took the barge out and that should go this week. And I am asking for, fifteen thousand dollars was the overall estimate, I'm asking for actual load tickets, just as we did for the rest of the project, determine the exact number of what that extra material is.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Schaefer, on that same one, Bill, so do we know, it may not be fifteen.
It may not be fifteen.
It may be less, okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? See none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi.
Yes.
Alderman Harding.
Yes.
Alderman Glad.
Yeah.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes. Thank you, counsel, next item on the agenda was pulled by Alderman Glad for A, six A, is City of McHenry Complete Streets Policy and Ordinance to Support Transportation Access Quality of Live and Economic Development for the City of McHenry and its residents. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, we're talking quality of life and economic development for the City of McHenry and its residents, and when you read this policy, I don't see a stress at all in residential streets, and my feeling is, is the way that policy is written and read, that it just seems like there's so many things that we'd like to do, but we're not really addressing the basic problem, which has been the streets in the City of McHenry. Every time that we do some of these projects that we get grant money for, granted, it's nice that they pay eighty percent, but we're paying twenty percent, and that's taking away from the street programs, and it bothers me, the fact that, again, I don't see anything in there that really talks about the street programs within our neighborhoods, and it's really getting to be a bigger and bigger concern all the time. So, I just wanted to bring that up.
Any other comments, questions by council? Looking for a motion for approval for six A as presented. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make that motion.
Second, Alderman Santi?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel, next item on the agenda is six B, was pulled by Alderman Glad, Oakwood Drive Bridge Replacement Preliminary Engineering Services Agreement for Federal Participation with Baxter and Woodman Incorporated, the amount not to exceed a hundred nineteen thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars. The local agency agreement for the federal participation in this, and a City of McHenry Resolution appropriating funds for the Oakwood Drive Bridge Replacement and a budget amendment ordinance for Phase One Engineering Services for the Oakwood Drive Bridge Replacement Project, which will amend the overall contract cost from seventy-five thousand to a hundred nineteen thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars, and the local share from fifteen thousand to twenty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I have for years been talking about Boom Creek, and the fact that we don't have a real good handle on what's going on with Boom Creek. And again, the discussions kept coming up every time we talked about digging out Boom Lagoon. Again, stuff's coming from Boom Creek, Boom Creek's filling up. You could see, just we're Oakwood bends, if you saw that area twenty years ago and what it looks like now, I mean, it's just, you couldn't tell it was the same open area that it was at that time. And my concerns are, is we haven't seen development south of Boom Creek yet. When the juristat development comes in, you cross Bow Valley, and then you have the Stoddy property there, that sooner or later will come into the city and get developed, maybe it won't be for twenty more years, but the thing is, are we going to be ready for any of these developments? Because I can remember with a hundred-year storm, watching the water running across Dartmoor on both sides of the bridge. And granted, we don't have a hundred-year storm every year, but I've seen it where we've had more than one in one year in the last twenty. And they do for a good, in fact, we had a hundred-year storm on the south end, I believe, our discussions were about two months ago. So, I guess my concern more than anything else is, you're doing projects like this, the capacity that will be moved through these, through underneath Oakwood, is not going to change, correct? It's basically going to be a replacement of what we have.
It's possible the conveyance could increase a bit. Anytime you replace a bridge, you have to meet, I guess, modern requirements in terms of the magnitude of storm that has to be able to pass. But we also have to, as a part of that design process, model and prove that there is basically no negative effect upstream and downstream of the properties upstream and downstream of the structure that we build. So we have to prove that we aren't going to inadvertently cause damage to someone's property either down or up from our improvement.
And I understand that, and I agree a hundred percent with that, but the only thing I'm getting at is, is are we going to spend this money to fix this bridge at this point in time? And sooner or later, we're going to have to bite the bullet, we're going to have to look at a long-term plan for Boom Creek. I know it's a very, very costly project, and it may take twenty years for that project to get done, but it's going to be in phases, if we ever get started doing it. And the thing is, is are we going to spend, you know, all this money and then have to tear this up down the road because it doesn't fit the way it's engineered right now with the total plans for the entire, what would you call, rehabilitation of Boom Creek?
I don't believe so, because any future development has to contain itself, you know, with our detention requirements, and any development that happens, particularly upstream, would have to, again, it would have to contain itself and be released at a very slow rate of release, and I don't believe that would affect the design of this structure either now or in the future. These developments have to stand on their own two feet in terms of their effects.
You know what, I've argued with engineers before, I know what I see when I go out there. Over the last fifteen, sixteen years, I haven't been out there that much, but twenty years ago, I happened to be off twice when we had a hundred-year storms. I've seen where the water comes and where it flows, and like I've told staff many years ago, if I'm sitting on the back of my deck and telling you where the water flows in the high school fields, no engineer's going to tell me I'm not seeing what I see. And when I was out there with those hundred-year storms, no engineer's going to tell me I didn't see what I saw. And I'm telling you that we're going to wind up with development, just like Ann Street right now, where we're getting more and more, because of the development of Patriot Estates, and because of Crestwood Trails, that yes, they go with our city ordinances as far as what they have to build for detention. However, that detention is, is for what, a twenty-year storm? It doesn't, it doesn't address a hundred-year storm, and that winds up really impacting our systems. And the thing is, is we need to be ready for that development so that, if nothing else, maybe we need to make some of these developers pay for some of that improvements before the taxpayers wind up getting hit for it at the end. And again, that's, all I'm saying is, is we need to start doing studies, long-term studies, and know where we're heading ten, fifteen, and twenty, and thirty years out. And granted, I don't want to call it piecemeal, but phases that we do, we want to make sure that that all fits in line with everything else that needs to be done. And I'm not just talking Boom Creek, but other areas as well. You know, how are we going to fix Ann Street? Probably, we're going to look at regional detention possibly, if we do, who's going to pay for that? It's not going to be the developers, because they're already building, they've already built. And it's going to impact us, and there's something that we're going to have to do. I mean, I believe the travesties of seeing drainage since I was a kid, I can remember when we used to come out here to West Shore Beach back in the late fifties, early sixties, and watch the sewer covers come floating up and getting pushed up in the displains because of the water pressures that were coming out of the sewers. We don't want to wind up with those type of problems, and we're going to need to plan properly out there over a period of time, but we need to get these studies done. And I guess that's my major concern, is the fact that I think we need to do something to make sure that down the road, we're not just doing these as piecemeal, because this is kind of what this is. It's something that does need to be done, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying it doesn't need to be done, but it bothers me that we don't know how that, that specific bridge is going to be in the wake of the entire reconditioning of Boom Creek. And until we know that, I feel that we're spending the dollars now because we have to, but how much of that could be saved down the road if it was done and engineered the way it needs to be for the future? And I guess that's the point I'm driving on.
Any other questions, comments by council? See none, I'm looking for a motion for item six B as presented. Alderman Glad?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Alderman Mahavich, second. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes. Thank you, counsel, next item that was pulled by Alderman Glad is six E, Professional Services Contract for the Bearville Road Wing Wall Replacement Project to Hampton, Lanzini, and Renwick Incorporated, and the amount not to exceed sixty thousand six hundred and ten dollars. Alderman Glad?
Yeah. We became responsible for this right away when we did the annexation for, what is that, that subdivision Shamrock? Part of where it goes through. Anyway, however, the water that flows through there comes a lot, starts actually from fields that are in Prairie Grove, comes through the conservation department, through the conservation areas, and then underneath the road, and then goes out to the county, and then back into the conservation areas again, until it reaches the river. Yet, the City of McHenry is paying the sixty thousand dollars to fix it. And is there any way that we could ask the conservation department to pay for part of that, or possibly part of Prairie Grove, because a lot of that is going to be impacted by Prairie Grove? When they start developing south of that subdivision. That's all going to come in from there. And have we looked at revenues from possibly the conservation department, considering they're the ones where this this water flows through, and it actually starts, like I say, you know, further southeast, or I'm sorry, southwest from Bearville. And it just concerns me that we're picking up the tab to fix it when there are other entities that are the ones that are impacting it, and other than the fact that we got stuck with that part of the roadway because we had to annex the entire property, and then that was donated to the Conservation District many years ago, it really doesn't help or hinder the City of McHenry in any way, shape, or form. But again, like I say, I understand that, you know, it is part of our right of way, but to me, I just feel that there are other taxing entities that possibly should be helping pay for that project. And maybe, maybe it's food for thought when we look at annexations down the road of things like this, because this was missed, I'm sure, it's not something that just deteriorated just recently, it's the way it was constructed and everything in the first place, and it's not something that we looked at as far as when we took over responsibility for it, when we did the annexation years back, otherwise, I'm sure we would have had the developer pay for it, you know? And I know we were there when that happened, but I'm just saying, you know, for the future, we, maybe we think about that, that we all the infrastructures that exist so that we don't wind up having to do these things later.
Any other comments, questions, Alderman Santi?
Yeah, real quick, because of this, where this is located, and we have no other options, it's, this is, I understand where Alderman Glad's coming from, you know, regardless of Conservation Department, but, or District, but it's on us, I mean, there's no, there's no grant money or anything that we can look at, or any, any other government agencies, any levels, to request?
Correct, we did do a bit of research to see if there were any sort of IDOT programs that were available. The issue is, while it is a box culvert that is a relatively complex, more complex structure than just a regular, simple culvert crossing, it's not twenty-foot in span, so it doesn't, it's not classified as a bridge, so it's not thereby eligible for federal aid, because it's not a bridge. And a lot of the STP projects that we do, even other agencies, when they have to do rehabilitative work, do a large box culvert structure, even bridges, a lot of times, those costs are a hundred percent local. For example, the Lincoln Road, Pro Lincoln Project, the Pearl Street Bridge, the duct patching, and the bearing repairs that were done on that project, those were done a hundred percent local. So, these sorts of structures, if it's not a bridge replacement, typically it's on the local links.
Thank you. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, just, we talked about the Oakwood drainage and how it's engineered to make sure that it doesn't impact any any properties up or downstream from there. I'm sure we're doing the same thing with this, because doing the same thing with this because when it leaves the conservation area and it goes underneath that road, which is our responsibility, it then flows on the private property before it goes to conservation. I just want to make sure that we don't wind up picking up any liability. You know how we've had problems before where somebody says, well, we did this or we did that, and it impacted flooding for somebody and when it, in essence, it wasn't. Just so that we're, make sure that all our eyes are dotted and our teeth are crossed on this so that nothing comes back to bite us later.
Yeah, well, this, yeah, this, this scope is a little more extensive than, than we would have hoped for for permitting compliance issues because of working in a waterway. But we, we are not adjusting capacity. We're keeping the same barrel section. The barrel's still in good shape. This is just a matter of, the, the wing walls are about to fall over. One already has. And the purpose is to restore the wing walls to serviceable condition, keep the same barrel and the same conveyance capacity, and, and get the full service life out of the structure that we think we can get.
Are there any restrictions now because of that caving in or is it pretty much flowing as it was designed originally?
No, no restrictions. The, the old wing wall actually fell across the, the stream. We brought in a contractor to pull it out because it was sitting there for some time. So no limitations. And we do, we did have, put in a temporary sheet power pair to reduce the risk of any sort of washouts, but it's, it's not a permanent repair. A permanent repair is what we want to work on.
The flows will be the same and that way at least it's on record that the flows will be the same when we get done with the project?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Schaefer.
And, and this particular waterway, is that considered anybody's, any jurisdiction, the actual waterway?
It is, it is armor core jurisdictional. So we've got scoped into our scope of services, armor core permitting for that, for that purpose. Anytime, anytime you're working in and around waters in the U.S., permitting and the amount of protection of the waters you have to do is, is pretty, pretty intense. And we're making sure we're complying with that requirement.
Is there any support from them, from a funding standpoint?
No.
No?
None, none I'm aware of. That's all I had. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? For a motion on six E as presented. Alderman Santi?
I'll make that motion as is presented. Second. Alderman Mahavik?
Second. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item is seven A, action item. Let me go ahead and pass it over to David McCarthy at this time.
So we tried to give you information that everyone was looking for regarding indemnification. I was requested by one of the Alderman, I don't remember who it was, that to bring back a, an ordinance that we could pull from somewhere else. I, I looked at four or five of them. I selected Lake Forest. I gave you their version. I really didn't touch that very much. I added a sentence at the end, but I wanted to see you, I wanted to show you that village's action, the way it was written, without trying to customize it to my liking since I'm the one writing it. So I heard back from Alderman Mahavik, who's got some comments to try and restrict the intent of Lake Forest maybe a little bit more narrowly, a little closer to what the statute provides by way of tort immunity. And so I'll let him give you his comments and then we'll see where we go with this.
Well, thank you. I mean, I want to say first of all, I'm in favor of having an ordinance on the books providing for indemnification of governmental, our employees. No question. But I think it should be on the lines of the Governmental Tort Immunity Act, Section three oh two, which we have in our packet. The ordinance we were given from Lake Forest goes well beyond that, and I think it's got some problems with the way it's written in addition to that. So it's, I think it's overbroad and I think it's got issues with the way it's written. And we'd like to see how other ordinances from other municipalities have done it to see what we want to do and craft our own. I don't want to use the one from Lake Forest. I think we should work on creating our own. And I think it should be pretty much along the lines of exactly what Section three oh two of the Tort Immunity Act here provides. Those are my thoughts.
One thing I did know after we spoke is I went back to the definition. The Tort Immunity Act talks about injury and injury talks about civil actions. And the Lake Forest one went into administrative criminal allegations. So we might want to broaden it in that respect. But it did, obviously every town adopts this at a time when it's relevant. I don't think they just pop it into their codes. They, something happens and they incorporate it. So they might be written around whatever was going on in Lake Forest at the time. It doesn't really apply to us. So if we stick close to the statute, it's a very good idea.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I would say we, again, table this. I would ask if Alderman Mahavik, considering your background, what was the, given part of to form, would, you would feel that the rest of the council would feel comfortable with an ordinance specific? And I'll make a motion to that.
Is there any other discussions?
Yeah.
Alderman Santi?
I, I, I understand what's been discussed here and to write it more words appropriate for the city of McHenry. The one item, when I looked at this, I, and I, I thank the mayor Jeff for spending some time with me a few days ago discussing this item prior to coming to us tonight. I was looking at this as potentially breaking it up into two motions anyways where you would work on this ordinance and, and pass fail what have you at that time. But also, there is, there is some money out there that the, the mayor's attorney is requesting. I don't want to, I, you know, if, if we're to vote, i- is that, is it a possibility of voting on that tonight because to whether we do or not, but to take care of this portion of the, of this item?
You can't. I, I think under the Tort Immunity Act, the way it's written, you have the discretion to do that.
And, and the reason, because we're going to do this ordinance, it's almost like it's, to me, it's, it's saying we're putting something in place to take care of something that happened in the past. And it, it doesn't, it doesn't feel right to me. And I, I would look at this situation as it's one item. Yes, what the attorney said is that we don't normally go into something like this until it occurs or potential, has potential to, to occur. So I, I'm open to that. I'm open to that discussion of at least making a motion for a payment or not to pay, but I want to be able to, to look at that option tonight because if we, if you understand, if we do this ordinance, it's, it's after the fact of what's already occurred. If you follow that thinking, and I'll leave it at that if anybody else has thoughts on that.
Alderman Schaefer?
Separated that, for the, what's in the, the three oh two versus what's in Lake Forest, it, it talks about employees versus like council or Alderman. Would that be included in the, how it's determined for the other one? Is that what you were thinking too?
It was. That's what I was thinking. Plus, I think under the Act, it would admit employees are.
Yeah, it's an odd term because when you read it, it doesn't seem to fly. But then when you look at the definitions of employee, it includes.
Elected officials?
I think it's important to include the appointed commissioners. Who are not going to be in possession on that applies. Because police commissions, or at least they, back in the day when they were in charge of, you know, discipline, that was an issue.
Right. Okay. That's all I had.
Anyone else? See none? Anyone else? Separate or?
I can't remember. Is there a motion pending? You have a motion?
No.
Oh, okay.
Well, I honestly haven't heard enough. I mean, if it's, if we table everything, I, I understand, but if there's a, you know, if there's a thought out there in regards to what I brought up, I, I mean, I'd like to hear comments if, if you're comfortable.
Am I to separate the items?
Yes. So I'll make the motion then to table the ordinance until a further, further work is done.
Till the next meeting.
Till, till the next meeting. And.
But that's all.
That's it.
Second. Alderman Devine? Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there another motion? Alderman Santi?
I would like to make a motion that we, we reimburse Mayor Jeff on his legal fees in regards to defending him on the ethics complaints filed against him in a sum of two thousand, seven hundred, forty-five dollars and ten cents.
Pursued to the Tort Immunity Act.
Pursued to the Tort Immunity, Immunity Act.
Second. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll second. Thank you.
Discussion? Alderman Mahavik?
Can't support the motion for three reasons. One, it's retroactive. Two, there's no statute in the books, sorry, ordinance on the books to support it. And three, I don't think the Tort Immunity Act is clear, you know, clearly covers the situation.
Any other discussion? Alderman Santi?
I, okay. If it doesn't pass tonight, do we have the option to bring it back?
You would then, if you brought it back, the better way to bring it back would be to adopt it under the ordinance if that ever gets adopted.
So I'd have to change our motion?
A different motion?
Or, or just let the most?
Right.
Okay. All right. I, I, I understand that. Okay. I understand.
Alderman Schaefer?
Attorney McCarthy, do we have any, with your knowledge of just in the city of McHenry where we've had legal fees for elected officials that have happened in the last twenty years?
It's a memory thing. I don't think so. I don't think this has ever happened. Otherwise, we would have adopted this. I don't understand why this isn't in your code today, actually. It's in most codes. But I also know I've written it because things have happened in other towns. So I don't know. I don't, I don't think we've ever had an incident.
I was trying to recall in my, the, since I've been on the council, but the, I don't, can't recall any. I know we've had, obviously, litigation, but I don't recall any elected officials with any.
Right. We, we've had electoral fights, but those aren't, those aren't the type of the nature that would be covered by this. So I don't think anyway, if, if people have been sued on the city council or boards, it's been covered by insurance. And that's the other thing. Most actions are covered by insurance because of if something happens, right? If there's a fight outside city hall in a meeting and someone files suit over the fight, then that's all going to be handled through insurance. We're talking about the non-insurable type of incidents that rarely happen. You know, if, if employees are terminated for a particular reason and they're not happy about that, they can file suit, but that's covered by insurance. It's hard to envision situations that aren't covered in that respect.
Alderman Santi?
I refer to Attorney McCarthy. Okay, I made the motion. It was seconded. If, after this discussion, I wanted to.
Withdraw. And you might want to talk to the guy who made the second.
Okay.
Technically, you're supposed to make a motion.
Yeah.
To, to withdraw it and then there'd be a vote on that motion to withdraw if it was supported by a second.
Okay.
We usually handle these informally. If the second withdraws and the first withdraws, then we all agree that's.
I guess, yeah, I will, I will ask Alderman Schaefer, who's willing to make the motion to withdraw. They can agree. Okay, so.
So we'll let this develop in the next meeting.
Exactly. Yes. I'll make that motion to withdraw.
Motion, so a motion to withdraw and a second by Alderman Schaefer.
We'll bring it back in the next meeting. Both items.
If we do, we vote separately.
The first and second will do instead.
Okay.
Please call the roll. No?
No, no. We've never done that in the past. I can do it that way. You know, I don't, I forget my procedure, whatever you want.
No motion anymore?
Yes.
Motion was. Okay, okay. Very. Next item on the agenda is a discussion item, consolidation of Independence Day fireworks to first weekend of yesterday's. We do have Kay Bates and Molly from the Chamber of Commerce here. And then Bill, if you can go ahead and start us off.
Sure. Chief Burke and I have kind of sat down and are really planning and really took a look at how we can best consolidate or become more efficient in our operations as we've really taken on a lot of events, which is, is great for us. It's a great place to be. You know, it certainly draws people to town. But how can we best manage those events as a staff? And I think that's really what spurred some of our discussion. And you already received an email about the possible alterations to sidewalk sales and what that might look like this year. We continue to work on that and actually met with some bar owners today to further about those discussions. But through the course of, of this discussions or the, you know, the efficiency and consolidation, potential consolidation, one that popped up was the consolidation of fireworks from a standalone event the week before, just right the week before Fiesta Days and moving that to a part of Fiesta Days. There's certainly some advantages that happen with that, both from a setup and from a manpower issue from a police department and parks department. But it also, it, it helps out the chamber in that Sunday is typically a slow day for them. It really puts a cap on a family day. Sunday is a free day that the chamber has put on the last two years and really it fits well. You have entertainment out there. You have food options out there. There's a number of things that really worked well. On our side of things, we've talked about how do we improve that show over the last course of years under some budget crunch. Moving it off of that prime weekend actually gains us, you know, I would say probably a ten percent increase in that show for the same amount of money. But the other side of that is but now pairing with the Chamber of Commerce on this, we open ourselves up to some, be more attractive to sponsors who might be willing to add some money to that. That's an area that we've, I think we've been lacking in a few years. Having that framework or having those ideas behind it, we first met with, I first met with the McHenry area, JCs or McHenry JCs, and had that discussion with them because it's been their event. And traditionally, that's, it's one that they put on. They've also struggled. I, I guess having intricate knowledge, they've struggled the last few years just for manpower to help get that event pulled off through the day. And so that was one of the things that also played a role in this. And met with their president and vice president and we talked about what some options might be for them, what they'd expect or how, how it could look at consolidation or if they were even interested. They took that to their general, their general assembly and, and it was favorably received. I, I think there's some negotiations that need to happen, provided that the council is, is okay with this. And so after that, we went to the Fiesta Days board and spoke with them about the same conceptual idea of moving Fiesta Days because it would change their hours. That would be something that would have to come back to city council, would change their hours, it would change their entertainment for that day. And walking out of that meeting, I think that, and I don't speak for them, but I think that they were very, very much excited about that potential and that idea of a partnership and pairing those, those events together. And so with that, you know, the next step was really to bring it to, to the board here, to the city council and see if this is something that, that you're interested in. Because it does change our summer event schedule, but we want everybody, each of the parties to be on board so that then we can go back to the chamber and the JCs and put them in the room together and figure out what works. Are there certain vendors that the JCs has always had out there that they would want to continue to have out there? Is there a presence that the JCs would want to have out there? Does the chamber need help in setting up or breaking down that maybe the JCs can provide some of those manpower? There's a lot of those issues that would need to be worked out, but having. There's a lot of those issues that would need to be worked out, but having an agreement from all the parties involved was the place we wanted to start. So with that, I will, unless Chief Burke, do you have anything else to add to that?
No.
No. We'll turn it over to you for either discussion, questions, just to put it up at this point.
Alderman Schaefer?
When I first saw this and heard about it, I, I was very much in favor of it. I, I still am. I, um, I think the biggest thing, one of the things we've been wanting to do or see, I should say, with fireworks for a long time was a a better show, more, um, more shots and things, that's that for the amount of money that we have. And we've known that in order to do that, you either have to spend more money to get that or possibly reschedule it on a day other than the Fourth of July weekend, because we've seen that in other communities. So that was one of the reasons why I thought it was, it would be a benefit to all the people who go. And it would give all of those people that love and participate in the Fiesta Days another opportunity for an event that I think would be a great addition to the Fiesta Days. And I think based on the standpoint that it's a couple of weeks ahead of the Fourth of July, it falls into that same basic timeframe and and because so many communities around us are doing it on the Fourth of July, especially this year being the Fourth is on a Saturday, I believe.
It is.
It would be, it's going to be extremely competitive for good shows on the Fourth of July themselves, so for those reasons, I, I, I think it would be good. I think we definitely have to work out all of the, the, you know, how things would work between the JCs and the chamber. I also agree that for, we should have within the community, like our neighboring communities do for their shows, we should have, you know, collection sites at local establishments because they get, they garner, you know, thousands of dollars in change from people when they see that they're, you know, that's on there. And in some areas that have had a better show than what we've had in McHenry, it's all funded that way. So I would love to see the, the chamber and the businesses get involved that way too, just from a collection standpoint and an additional funding source.
I think, just speaking to that, I think one thing that the chamber does extremely well, you know, and that's, that's their role is making those connections with the business community and their partners. And so that does open up, I think, a number of other doors for us.
Hold on.
Yeah, the way I look at it is, is we're doing away with, with an event. When we combine them, we're doing away with an event. If, I'm a younger family, three, four, five, whatever. And I believe that Sunday is a no entrance fee, a family night or a family day. And I thought that was great because now, you know, you're going to get back to the old ways where people go there. It's not a, a large amount of money to, you know, granted, I mean, depending on how much they spend on food or whatever, but at least they can bring their family in there, they can enjoy together with their neighbors or, or people that they haven't seen once a year, some people used to take and actually schedule their vacations to come back to McHenry just for Fiesta Days years ago. Because of the connection of families, you know, getting together at Fiesta Days. Now, the problem winds up is this, I've got a family of two or three kids and I wind up in Fiesta Days on that Sunday. I gotta get in there at one or two o'clock in the afternoon knowing that the fireworks isn't going to start till nine thirty at night. And I could, I'm going to be there till, till eleven o'clock. And then I gotta fight the crowds, get now. I think that would deter me from either one or the other. And what we've done now is, is we've kind of taken the option of going to both, kind of away almost because most parents aren't going to want to deal with the kids for that length of a time because, you know, kids, I mean, granted, they're having a great time and everything else, but after a while, they get tuckered sometimes before the parents do and then they get cranky and it can be just a bad scene for some families. I think the enjoyment should be separated so that you have both events. Now, I can understand that especially like with the chief, he's got a problem with scheduling vacations because, you know, manpower and everything else and he blocks out certain weeks because of that. You know, with a June promotion now, that's going to block out more. But, I mean, again, these are for certain types of fundraisers where you bring in, just like the chamber does with their big bands, you bring in a certain element of the community that, that goes to these type of events. The families with the young kids aren't going to go to the rock concerts at, you know, till ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night. That's why I, I hate the idea of combining the two. Yes, it would be probably where we get a little bit more revenue for, you know, for the fireworks, possibly a better show. But I will say that in the past, I have always been a critic of our fireworks shows and every, every time I go sit there, I, I time them every single year. So I know exactly how long, you know, if they said that it's going to be a twenty-five minute show, I know it's a twenty-five or thirty-five, whatever they say. Because for a while there, it kept getting down to where I think one year we had like eighteen minutes.
Eighteen, yep.
And it was like, are you kidding me? You know, it takes you a half hour to get in, it takes you an hour to get out for an eighteen minute show. And at one point, we used to, I think, give a lot more than fifteen thousand, didn't we?
The highest we, we were ever up to was twenty-five, but that was also when we were getting a reimbursement from the JCs from the haunted house. And so we'd still put in fifteen and they'd give us ten back. We haven't received any money at all from the JCs the last couple of years, and so that's why we actually took over the collection of money and then paid the JCs a percentage of what the overall take was the last two years.
Was it in the mid-two thousands that we took it? We, we cut it because of the economy and everything else?
We've cut it twice. We cut it down to twenty-one and then down to fifteen.
We never, never, you know, added to it. And needless to say, the cost of fireworks does go up. You know, I like the idea of the community taking in, you know, possibly at, at the different businesses having just spare change thrown in there. Yeah, that can add up significantly. Now, another question I've got is, is they have always done, raised money as far as bringing cars in, five dollars a car. Now, are we going to charge for the fireworks if we, if we combine them?
What we talked about initially was that it would be free entrance altogether. You know, I think there's a lot of those details need to be worked out still, but it would be completely free. Parking would be free, entrance would be free. So bringing your family into that, it becomes a little bit cheaper. I know it's only five dollars a car or a dollar at the gate. But there's also now, the JCs have struggled having food options out there. They used to have Nights at Columbus. The last two years, the JCs haven't been able to get the Nights at Columbus out there. And so you've just seen like a pizza place and a funnel cake and, you know, various other ones, but there had, there hasn't been that presence out there. So this solves those problems and I, and I certainly understand the feel of each event is very different. I, I think this is, this is an addition. When you, when I take my family out there and I know I get in free, there's more things for the kids to be ready to hold. That music on that night can be catered, you know, we, and this is, we used to always have American English on Sundays. And so that was a bit more of a, but there's a lot of those type of family bands that are out there. We've had a DJ the last two years and no, you know, no other entertainment option. So some of those things by partnering, I think the options for a family, and I, and I certainly agree with you, that you, what you might wind up seeing is that those families don't come out there at one o'clock because they're not going to stay all day. Maybe we come out at four o'clock and stay from there. That's, right now, that's the earliest, on a Saturday, that's the earliest we see families show up, is like four o'clock. And then typically the, that crowd starts filing in about six or seven o'clock when you start seeing any volumes of crowd out there. But that's because there's nothing else for them to do also. This now gives them some options for things to do. Or maybe you come out there in the morning and you enjoy part of the beach day, you go home and relax and then you come back out later, especially for the families that live in McHenry. I think that's an attractive option for them.
How would it work as far as the JCs, you know, they, they did collect quite a bit of revenue with the cars coming in that would help pay for that, that fireworks. Now, that would be taken away.
Well, the city has actually collected the last two years because, because the JCs have stopped donating to us at all because of the haunted house. They haven't given us a dime over the last two years. And so the city has collected the money the last two years. Our total take the last two years has been about five thousand dollars. We turn around and we do give twenty percent back to the JCs because they put the manpower on there, you know, they're organizing the show or, I mean, the city organizes the show, but they organize the, the DJ and they organize the food vendors being there. So there's some value for them to set that up. Whatever negotiations happen between the JCs and the Chamber of Commerce, I think that's what needs to work itself out. Is there a donation that the chamber makes to the JCs? Because it has been their event and as a check, or they do a lot of good things in our community. There's, there's a lot of benefits for the, for the Chamber of Commerce to have the fireworks as part of that Sunday, which has really been a slow day for them in the past. So this could be an attractive option to help everybody involved from the carnival, food vendors, musicians. Just all around, I think it, it's a win for them.
Well, I just think if the JCs are having that much of a problem as far as the impact to them, then maybe we need to look at other organizations that could possibly work with them to help out, you know.
That's what we're doing, you know, that's.
Well, but we're talking about the chamber, we're talking about moving it and combining it and doing away with a event this way, because that's exactly what you're doing. You're making Family Day, Fiesta Days greater, but then you're taking another event totally away to do it.
Yeah. But it's, then it's, and I, I, I completely agree and I see what you're saying, but it's also then it provides an opportunity. If your, if your family wanted to go out of town, which a lot of people go out of town for the Fourth of July, now you can still enjoy that with your family and friends when you come back. When Fiesta Days is a time when people come back to our community. And I think this is a time for them to be able to gather. Fireworks has always been a time for them to gather, but yes, we lose an event, but it also now creates, I think, a greater impetus for everybody to get together on that, on that day when maybe outside of a holiday weekend, when you might try to get away with your kids or wherever, just to escape town for a couple of days, your day off work.
Like I say, I know it's a difficult decision to make and a different difficult choice, but it's still, I still feel the way I feel. I'll leave it at that.
Any other comments or questions, Alderman Santi?
No, I, I, yeah, I measured the, well, just in my own mind, just trying to figure, measure in regards to what's, what's more beneficial, you know, for the city as a whole. And I, I do lean towards looking forward to, to doing this and seeing how this works on a Sunday. I know this kind of puts a little bit more of a larger window of activity or timeframe in the Sunday. So that'll be interesting to see how that whole concept draws out from like seven o'clock on
Yep.
for the, for the fireworks. I, you know, and I, and I, and I really ask that, you know, we try to be as objective as possible when, if in fact we do this, that we, you know, we take a look afterwards. I know how you guys get together regardless of Fiesta Days anyways, anyways afterwards, just to see, how did it go?
Yep.
Is it worth it? You know, should we go back to the Fourth? Because it is a, you know, the Fourth is a unique event, very, very competitive. And, you know, when I've been able to go to a couple other villages around here for fireworks off of the Fourth of July, I've seen some extremely wonderful shows that they've done for a lesser cost. And, boy, I, I, I hope we don't have to put a, I hope we don't have to put a stopwatch on it because I, I think we should get, we definitely should get more bang for the buck on something like this, yeah, on that date. That's all I have.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yeah, I agree there too. I, the one thing I do want to stress though, when you're looking at fireworks show, don't always just look at the time because you can spread out one shell every thirty seconds and it's a pretty dull show and it'll last a half an hour. But you gotta go, they, they measure that based on the number of shells that go off, so. If you've looked at Lake Moors, for example, just extremely, extremely good show. They have, they have a finale in the middle, like a semi-finalie, and then they have one at the end. It's, it's it's tremendously a lot going on at one time. It's not one shell going off every so often. So I just want that to be, I think you got, I think that's how they charge you for it, by the way, is by shells, so it's not by time.
Typically fireworks shows are about a thousand dollars a minute. Typically, again, our show's been fifteen thousand dollars and we've asked, we've required twenty-five minutes. And that's where you do see less shells in the air.
Yep.
And so we, we've asked for those RFPs that have had, and, and our three-year contract with Melrose is up, so we're, we're ready to, you know, again, ask once again for people to come back with proposals. And, and we can base those on shell count. There's a lot of things to look at. But we've had some, we've had some good options the last two years between, you know, Mad Bomber and Melrose. And I think we even had Five Alarm shoot it three years ago.
Bill, how much did we spend for St. Patrick's?
Shamrock.
Oh, Shamrock's a lot.
Ten thousand dollars.
And that show almost, in my opinion, was better than.
Yeah, on that one, we just, we just asked for a finale. That's, that's really all that we wanted was an intense kind of end to the event, no more than, no more than fifteen minutes.
Right.
Put a lot in the air quickly and end the event and send everybody home with a smile on their face.
Right. Alderman?
Yeah, if we're going to do contracts with fireworks, I don't want to see multi-years. Unless it's a very, very significant savings because I've found that when we take and we go off for proposals, that we usually find that over a period of time, we don't get the best bang for our buck. When we go off a proposal every single year, it's much more competitive and it's always seemed to get, you know, a greater show. When we had Mad Bomber take and do it.
Two years ago.
I mean, fantastic compared to when we had years. We didn't pay any more money.
Right.
We just became, it became more of a competitiveness within the city of McHenry to get better bids and everything else. And that's what we need to do. And it's a shame of what happened, that they didn't get it the following year due to whatever, you know, mishaps, whatever they said or whatever really did happen. I don't know, but I, I felt that their show wasn't very, very well performed that year. And, you know, I'm tough to, to press on fireworks, always have it. So I'm just saying, you know, I'd really like to make sure that we get competitive with it.
The only, the only thing that we need to do on that, and that's, that's, that's the thing to be the discussion upfront, is set a budget. Because they'll base their show on what that budget is and that's when you start looking at shell counts is does this person have this many shells or this size shells? And there's, you know, there's a lot of things that go into that. But setting the budget on our side is some, you know, we, if they don't bid the fireworks, they put the proposal together, we can look at what that show will be based on, how we set the budget. And hopefully for this year, we'll at least try with setting with another organization and maybe some sponsor dollars and see, see how that works out. There's nothing to say that, you know, maybe, maybe the chamber says, you know, this didn't work out for us, or we said it didn't work out for us. Or the JC says, no, we'd like to do differently. We like it back this year. But I think trying something new is not, is not a bad thing, especially when, when you look at all the checks in the plus column, I think.
Now, one of the things that I don't think we've even looked at or discussed, nothing in that. And that's the fact that if we're not going to charge for the show, and it's not going to be on the Fourth of July, it's not going to be competitive. And again, observations, because I'll usually stay in the fields parked with my family. And I've noticed, yes, you do have people that get to the park early, but then you have a tremendous amount of people that get there just before the show starts. How many more people are going to want to cram in there? How many more people are gonna wanna cram in there? At the end, because there is no charge. And, you know, I know five dollars sounds like a great bargain and it is. But for that five dollars, how many people would park in the, the old key mart lot? You know, I mean, wound up where some of these landlords just say, hey, no more, you know?
Yeah.
So.
So, so two things to that point. One is that the potential to alter the shoot site, I think, is important for this year. And since the city owns the horse farm behind it, horses are all put away for the, you know, for that day, especially when the fireworks are around, we've already talked to the contractor, it's possibly shooting them off by the pond. The shoot site is farther away, so now we can open, we, you know, we typically close off the park halfway. So people can't get any closer to those fireworks than we allow them to get. By moving the shoot site farther away, we've now, we're not trying to cram people in. So if more people do wanna come, it's a safe situation, safer situation for the attendees, for our police department. There is more room to park on the ballfields. We've had to overfill me a couple of times. But I think advertising is the key. If we start advertising this and some alternative parking locations, I think that's gonna be important as well. Because I, I think there will be more people, especially on a free, to come on a free show on an off night, I think you're, we're gonna see more people that wanna come out just for that.
It's a free show. The only negative is it's being a Sunday night.
Yep.
But again, there's no competition.
Yes.
At all, within a few days before or after. So that could wind up bringing in as much as fifty percent more than what we've had in the past. Can we handle it? Can the Chief handle it?
We can.
Can always handle it, right Chief?
Well, no, we support, we support this move because it, it frees up manpower for another weekend, you know?
Right.
As the city does grow events, we do have to look at the consolidating, you know, for the benefit of the employee as well. So this is a direct benefit to police officers. It frees up one weekend that they can actually take vacation time with their families, which is a prime weekend, the Fourth of July. We already have officers out there on a Sunday. So we, yeah, we'll have to add a few more, but that, and, you know, the important thing is there, although there is a minimal amount of money that we might not make, we don't, we don't recruit any of the costs for the Fourth of July fireworks, for manpower hours. Police department spends about five thousand dollars in manpower hours just to put on the fireworks show, plus whatever the Parks, Parks Department puts on for the setup pre. And so that cost to the city goes away. You know, so there's also a cost savings there to help offset any revenue that we would've lost in the sale of those fireworks as well. Whether or not it's a equal watch, I don't know, but the difference would probably be minimal.
Any other questions, comments? Almond then?
I'm, I'm in favor of this. If the Chamber and the J C's are good with it, I think it's a great idea. If doesn't work, we can switch it back next year and just give it a try.
Everyone agree?
The only thing is, you can't bring it back. You lose that year period.
Oh, okay. I think you gotta dollarize it for Alderman Glab and show him the savings and the profit part, and he might be in favor. I think it's, I think it's gonna be positive on, on all ends.
All ends.
Alderman Glab always looks at the services for the, the residents.
I think you're gonna get a better service to the residents here too because now that whole Sunday is gonna be a family day. And because it's gonna be possibly free, they can come and go if they like. And it's gonna be much more localized for us and the city residents than it would be for the, for the Fourth of July. But I think it's, it's gonna turn out to be a, looked upon by residents as a definite plus.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll just, I'll work with the Chamber and the J C's and we'll kind of hammer out the details. And then, like I said, back, we'll bring back before you that, what that a Sunday event would look like because there will be some alteration of hours as a whole in live entertainment and all the aspects that are part of that event. So that will come back before you once we finalize that. But thank you for the input, Almond. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill. Staff reports?
Yeah, I'll start. I want you to start, Ross. Go ahead.
I just wanted to let Council know we did hire a city planner, Cody Shera. He started this week. He comes to us from the county and has a pretty extensive background in planning. He did some. Grew up in McHenry, isn't, he wasn't, wasn't a McHenry resident. He doesn't look right now, but he's back in McHenry working for us. So just wanted to pass that along to Council. I'm trying to bring him in here in a future meeting, introduce him. But we now have a city planner. Cody Shera.
Thank you, Ross. Anyone else?
Yeah, just, just a couple of fun things for Council. This is, it should say draft on it, so it's supposed to be a draft. So you can write it on the front cover or whatever you wanna do for watermark and print out for some reason or I didn't wanna reprint them. So this is the draft of, of the capital improvement program for FY twenty twenty-one through twenty-four, twenty-five. And what we'll do is, it's two weeks ahead of time, so on the twentieth of January, so the next meeting, we'll have a, as a discussion item, we'll have the opportunity for Council to ask any questions of any staff that are here. Plus, we'll probably be bringing in additional superintendents or managers that participate in the development. I know Public Works has done that in the past, to be able to talk through any of the information that's identified in here. I guess what I'll remind Council of, that this is not a budget. Again, that's, that's the next step in the process. This identifies kind of a plan for projects, anything over ten thousand dollars that the city plans to spend money on, of infrastructure, vehicles, equipment, you know, park improvements, any public facilities, anything like that. This is just a five-year plan for that that's put together based on the best of our knowledge and ability and, and financial information at this time. And, and we've adjusted it a little bit this year to try, try to make it more of a reasonable, from a financial standpoint, while it still cannot be totally funded because it's still a fifty million dollar capital improvement program for five years. One of the adjustments, for example, is in the streets program, we, we've kind of thrown in all the projects that we know that are street projects, which throws off those numbers. Because it just, all it's done doing is, is a financial impact of saying we have a fifty million dollar street program. We all know we have a fifty million dollar street program. What can we really reasonably do over the next five years? Or potentially do over the next five years? So we broke it down a little more that way this time. And so take a look at it, come to the twentieth meeting, ready to ask any questions that you have. And then what we'll do is make any adjustments from there, and we'll bring it back to first meeting in February for formal adoption by, by the city council. And then obviously, we take the information that's in here and, and the direction provided by Council through that acknowledgement or approval, and we try to work those projects into the budget. So even if you, even if we identify things in the CIP that need to be done through priority, that doesn't necessarily mean they make it to the budget because there just may not be money to do it. So that's that. And then the next thing I have for Council is, you can pass these out. As you may recall, a couple of years ago, we were talking to, and it has been a couple of years ago, to Ricky Rockets and their project out on East one twenty. We started also talking about replacing the city's gateway signs on all the entrances to municipality south and north Route thirty-one and east and west one twenty. And in Ricky Rockets, we'd worked into that redevelopment agreement at the time, the replacement of the sign. And so we'd started to put together some concept plans for what that might look like. And, and then that project kind of slowed down, so we didn't do much with it. And that'll be coming back the next meeting, Doug?
Yeah.
The next meeting. And so we wanna be prepared to be able to say, you know, this is, from our standpoint, they're gonna contribute money towards it in the redevelopment plan. We obviously wanna be prepared when the weather breaks to be able to identify signage that we like and, and go up, go through a process to find a contractor for it. So what we're asking for on this one is just, there's, there's really two different sign options and two different base options that you have in front of you. Just look at those pages one, two, three, four, from top to bottom, and just send me an email or if you just wanna stop tonight and talk to Bill or Doug and I, and let one of us know what your preference is on those. Then we'll kind of consolidate what our, what our preferences are, and we can let you know, and kind of go from there. From a staff standpoint, I'll let you, I'll just say that we kind of tend to lean towards the river rock option over the brick options just because everything else, our other signage on the Riverwalk and some of the other signs that we've done, the digital sign out on one twenty by Jewel, we've used, you know, that's been river rock that we've gone with and not any sort of brick or anything like that. So that's kind of our preference from that. But from a signage standpoint, we're kind of, you know, split, you know, and what our recommendation is for the actual sign. Or you may say, I don't like any of these and we have to figure something else out. But at least let us know what your preference is out of those, one, two, three, four. And again, you can email it to me or, or Bill or Doug if you want, and then we'll be able to work that in when we, when we work forward with Thorn's. Thank you. There's nothing needed tonight. Just, I wanted to pass it out to get some input on that. Thank you.
Neither. Anyone else?
Mayor Port, I know a few Aldermen or Council members wanted to know sponsorship levels and so forth for the concert coming up. Within two weeks, we'll have all the sponsorships locked down. I'm happy that the way it's going, raised over two hundred thousand towards the artists so far. So it's been pretty, pretty good. We got the main acts set and we're getting openers locked down right now. So by that two weeks, you'll also get that information. It'll be confidential until February ninth when we can announce it. Okay?
I did, I did have one other item. Sorry, the, I sent out an email last week, I believe, or maybe the end of the week before. The Chamber Dinner Dance is coming up on Saturday, January twenty-fifth. It will be at DeAndrea again. And I've already made some, some table reservations behalf of the city there. But shoot me a text or an email as soon as you kind of let me know if you, if you're able to attend. You and your spouse are both able to attend, just let me know. And I'll get those reservations under the Chamber and then we can adjust it, our numbers based on that. But I have made some reservations and we can cut or add if we need to if people are interested. I think it starts at five thirty and then the music usually starts till about, starts at about nine o'clock. Goes till, I think, eleven or somewhere in there. Thank you.
Any city council comments? See none? Looking for much new journey. Almond Santi?
Almond, wait that motion. Second?
Almond Shaper?
Second.
Almond, please follow.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Shaper?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yeah.
Alderman Hardy?
Yes.
Alderman Haddick?
Yes.
Alderman Ryan?
Yes.
May Council? How was it, Ryan?